Walton trustees held a special meeting Monday, August 19th, to discuss remedies and steps taken for flooding on Cherry Street and Guild Avenue that some residents say is caused by a business owner developing adjacent property.
There's a few reasons why we called the meeting tonight. One was for to discuss Cherry Street and the ditches over there and what's been talked about. Then we thought, the chief wants to talk to us about police car, which we need. And Butch wants to talk to us about hiring somebody else. I had to think about it for a second, I'm sorry. But the first thing we'll talk about is Cherry Street. And Dor- uh Cherry, Dorick Street, I'm sorry. Guild Street, I'm looking at big, I'm going to go with Cherry. And as you know, this property was, that area over there was given to us years ago by Mr. Passamano. That ditch has been there for who knows how long, I don't know. You guys say that you've-
Fifty years.
Huh?
I've been there fifty.
Fifty years or better? That ditch has been there?
Fifty, fifty-three.
Fifty-three, okay, we're close. And Jimmy Frainer, the Mr. Frainer has filled in part of that ditch close to the Fancher Avenue, which has caused Cherry Street and part of Fancher Avenue itself to be flooded for a while now. Butch and him were having the discussion to try and open it up, to see what we can do to stop working on some of the problem. And when Butch comes up, he can explain it better too. Nothing was being accomplished, he wasn't working at all. And I said, let me get involved, let me go in and sit down with him and say, hey, when he came in, it was gonna look like it might be tough. I said, listen, I'm not here to argue, I just want to resolve a problem that we had. I says, you've covered up the ditch. I said, the ditch is where the water flows. I said, I know that we have to figure out a way for our water that's coming from Maple Street or Cherry Street, whatever water we have, we have to figure out an alternate route. I said, but why don't, before we do this, why don't we work out some kind of plan? Where you'll dig up the ditch and we'll at the same time look for an alternate route for our water, so that our water will not be going into your ditch supposedly. And it might hopefully solve some of the problem. And I said, but you got the wetlands over there. And he said, no, those aren't wetlands. And I said, well, what do you mean they're not wetlands? He says, the Army Corps of Engineers came down and gave me a letter or something that says they're not wetlands. The only wetlands he says he has is the one across from the door, that little area over there, and he said it's less than an acre. And I said, well, okay, then, let me see a copy of that report you got from the Army Corps. And he said, my lawyer says that I should not give it to you. And I said, well, if it's correct, why shouldn't we have it? He said, my lawyer says not to. I said, okay, fine. So I left there with the intention of, number one, talking about what kind of agreement we could come up with. And number two, before any of that would be signed, we'd have to see the letter that says that the Army Corps of Engineers said that is not wetlands. I spoke to Dave Merzick and he said he would call his lawyer, Mr. Gold, Gould, G-O-L-D, and O'Leant. And that was last Tuesday. And he said, his response was that he was out of the office until Monday because he was taking his son to college. So this morning, I called Dave again. And he said, Ed, I'm gonna give him another call. And he did, and the lawyer never called him back as of right now. So that's part of where we are right now. We, I just want to let you know what we have done as a village. We have checked with our code enforcement officers to see if there's any violations of the code. Dick, you know, you've been here before. And no. Butch has called up the DEC, state DEC, to take a look at it, correct? And there's not much what we can, nothing we can do with them or the state. However, the feds, if it is still a wetland, there is much they can do about it. I put in two calls already to, to the Army Corps of Engineers. One was a, like an 800 number, and the other one was up in Albany. I was told by Bill Brown, he helped me out, that that's the most current number you can get a hold of. I left him all my information, so please give me a call regarding this. The CWC, I spoke to them about if we have to do an alternate route of water, make some catch basins and things like that, if they would help us. And they said that they would come down next week.
Sometime next week then with the DEP.
With them and the DEP. And she stated that, well, tell them what you, what they said to you.
They basically said that if, you know, they come down to a site review and depending on what they find, she says it could go either way. But she, you know, was surprised that an area had been filled in such as that. So they're supposed to come down next week or supposed to do a walk through just to-
But the DEP will come down with them at the same time. So that's another agency that we can get involved with. You know, I'll then call the lawyer, check in with the DEC, check in with our code, check in with, yeah, there is something in state code that, for liability, if the runoff or something like that causes an area to flood, there is a liability that you gotta, but that's when you gotta get a lawyer and go to court and sue him that way. That would have to be on the individual homeowner or if it does damage to the village property, we would have to do the same thing. As of right now, that's pretty much where we are right this moment. I am not, we're not gonna sign any agreement or anything like that until we, until I see the letter, this so-called letter that says that the Army Corps of Engineers have deemed that not a wetlands. If there is such a letter, and we have it, I will make it available to everybody that lives over there. And we will work on an alternative plan to get catch basins and water, run it so that the water doesn't stay on Cherry Street mainly. The problem we're gonna have, well, what Butch suggested, and we're gonna talk to the board about it tonight, is that if you wanna try immediate fix for quick fix, we could block the catch basin on Guild, on Maple Street that has that line running into the ditch. We can easily block that. They can, he can also do another thing that would catch it on about 100 feet, that would catch it on all the Maple Streets, so that water would run down that way. The one on Cherry Street, we could put a block on that just so the water don't run into the pit. And then say, okay, none of this is out, because he's saying that's all our water. And we're saying, no, it's not. So if we, we did that, then you would see what would happen temporarily until we can figure out something. But we're gonna have the DEC, CWC come down, and we're gonna figure out some alternate route. Regardless of what happened when it was put in years ago, there was no agreement that was made. Maybe that was the first problem that was made regarding, we have the right of way. I spoke to the lawyer, I said, can we do anything like that? He said, no, it's his problem, there's no agreement, there's nothing in the, there's nothing in the code that you can help you with. He says, you could try and go eminent domain if you wanna try something like that, but he said, that's a long process and it's a very sticky thing to do. And that was the only options that I, I had so far. I just want everybody to know that I've called everybody I can think of that would have any kind of involvement in this. I'll give you a chance to say something, go ahead.
My main question could be, why not like you suggested, ship the water directly to the river down Maple Street instead of our-
Yeah.
And secondly, if you need a witness, I saw the guy fill that ditch in. I saw it from that company. And I called these people.
Yeah.
And they responded by, we could get a hold of them. This is not hearsay. Fifty-one years, I've never had a problem, never, until now. And I'll vouch for that.
I'll borrow the excavating company you're talking about, that's who you called up? Okay. I can call them, I'll say it's not a problem. We already talked about maybe diverting the water as much as we can down Maple Street. And Butch said it's only 100 feet, so I, I think that's a very doable thing. However, I, I'm still worried about what water is on Cherry Street.
Yeah.
And he, he, he built up that thing and there's a lot of water coming down from his property onto Cherry Street. He had said to me that in his plans that he put together, they came down and said he has to put in these gigantic tanks in the ground that would be catching water. He has to put two of them, and he said, I forgot how many, they were very big ones. And he said, that's what he has to do for rainwater and stuff like that. And I said, well, okay, I mean, we'll have to see the plans to see if something like that is going on, because he built it up so high. But there's nothing in our code that we can stop him with. And I asked the lawyer about it, go ahead, Dick.
You were asking about the wetlands?
Yeah, I, yeah. I, I see that, we have a copy of it. I, I agree with you, but I, I have to, he says no, but I have to-
I'm just not gonna argue with that.
Huh?
He's over there filming the ditch more now.
No, no, I know that.
Right now, as we speak.
Oh, he's dumping it.
He's dumping right now.
He's not dumping in the ditch.
Well, it's very near there.
No.
And the property, you mean, filling in the property?
Now, my problem is, like you said, you cover a much bigger area than just his property or Cherry Street. There are no catch bases on Bush, there's one on Guild, plus the one at the corner, and I don't know where all the water, where all the water from.
Yeah, there's three down.
There's three down, yeah.
The high school, the athletic fields.
That way you said not coming by-
The school's parking lot, yeah, I come across the road, it's not.
Yeah, that would, yeah.
Yeah, we, we-
But the rest of the area, all would drain in there because everything else is higher, other than what goes to the, to the, to the cemetery.
Which, I got a picture of that.
Which they moved.
Yeah. I, I think that we can take care of Maple Street, getting Guild and Maple, all that going down.
Well, the problem I have, if there's about 10 acres, if you look at all of his property, all the property off to that side of Maple Street, everything south of camp, say it's about 10 acres. One inch of water in 10 acres is 20, 271,000 gallons of water. Do we have the infrastructure down Maple Street to handle that kind of flow? As I say, it's, it, you're reading, what they need is a hydrologist's report and saying, this is what drains in there, this is how much water can go in there. And you have to have infrastructure that'll actually handle it. I mean, you're not gonna do that with a 3 or 4 inch pipe. And it is all a pill right now.
And we wouldn't be draining his property either.
Yeah, how are you gonna stop it?
Yeah.
From all his property, I mean, all the water he had, right?
And then all the runoff from his.
All the runoff from his property.
And I know he was, he said to me the other day that it was water from the street that gets onto his property. And I have pictures of, while it was raining on that Friday, the brown rivers running down from his parking lot, you know, right down into that shallow spot, and then, so.
I, I agree with you 100%.
There's a couple of problems there.
And I, I wanted you guys, I wanted you to know that we are expending any avenue we can to try and work this out. My, my, the only reason why I said we'd make some agreement is because I'm trying to get them to dig that, so at least the water runs until we find another alternate route. As far as this goes, I agree with you, Dick. I, I'm on the Coalition of Watership Towns, and we were talking about wetlands. There's a whole new project coming in from the state regarding wetlands. They're redefining certain wetlands. And if it's a wetlands that they consider wetlands, then they're saying that 200 feet around the, the wetlands itself, nothing can be built, nothing can be done. So if, if that is in fact wetland, then that whole project is gonna be a problem. So I, I will, I will tell you this, we're not gonna sign any kind of agreements until we see that letter that comes from, from the Army Corps of Engineers. And like I said, I put the call in, I'm just waiting for them to call me back. And that's the, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
Could it be considered that this could also be a health issue? In other words, you see the stagnant water over there, laying there. You've got schoolchildren that come down, they walk down our street, they walk down Cherry Street, and mosquitoes, I mean, any kind of health problem.
The water sitting there, you mean, yes, but yeah, I, yeah.
It's a concern.
But the mosquitoes, you can't walk out the front door without getting bitten by mosquitoes anymore. The smell is there, our basement is still, still drying out. Mold and abatement now. Who's gonna pay for that?
I, I'm more concerned, I understand.
Yeah, I-
We have to clean up, we're gonna have to clean up.
Right, no, I know.
But right now, the water is still over the catch basin there. It's, it's still there.
Yeah.
It doesn't drain.
I thought you said it was down.
It drained a little bit, yes, it's like-
But it's still, no, no, I, I get the point.
I understand, it's still standing, it's been a week, it's still standing there.
Right.
I still have Duxton Pond across the street from my house that never had water in there before you filled that up.
Yeah.
That ditch has been there forever.
Yeah.
It is a natural water-
I, I agree with you. He said they only wetlands he had though, across the street from you, that little, that pond over there.
Even without looking at the wetlands, the storm drainage is a natural water course, which that is what he filled it. Now, if they had been moved by any of the four or five different agencies that had built something in there, but at least the water had somewhere to go.
Well, if you remember when you were on-
He was hoping to stop it.
If you remember when you were on the board, the Army Corps came down and looked at that three years ago, I think four years ago, you were on the board, then I was there when they walked through and they looked at it. And, you know, everything was trying to get it running and everything. And I thought that was good. They didn't say you can fill it in or anything like that. They, far as they were concerned, at that time it was. So, and unless the, the, the letter states specifically it isn't, which I would show everybody, I'm kinda skeptical of that, but we have to see it in writing first. Nothing else will be done as far as agreement. But I, I, we, we could plug it, plug it just for now, just to prove a point that it's not our water. He's saying it's our water, that's-
What's it gonna do, put the water in front of my house?
Nothing.
Nothing. You know, the water is only about three inches from coming in my front door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that's the thing, he's saying that all of that is because of our water, is what he's saying, so if I plug the point-
So we plugged the- Whose water was it for the 50 years before? And that broke that, that ditch.
That's it. Shouldn't he have a responsibility being, I, I witnessed him filling that ditch in?
No, he knows, he said he filled it in. I'm, I'm, I've been talking to the lawyers to try and find out if there's any way that we can go after him for filling it in, and he says no.
I gave Butch, and I think you've got a copy of it.
Yeah.
It says you have to write to go in and just dig it out.
Right, but the only, the only problem with that, that, that situation there was that township was able to move the dirt from the shoulder of the road.
Oh, no, that was actually a ditch that they dug, right down across the farmer's field. And he took them to court, and the court said, if that water's been running that way for more than 10 years?
Well, I, I could tell you, I will speak to Dave Merzick tomorrow morning again about that, that exact thing. And if he says, let him research it, if we can, I have no problem doing that either.
I don't care what the long-term solution is gonna be.
Right.
But there needs to be an immediate something, because there's an immediate hazard. And I'm sure Tony doesn't want to devalue his home.
No.
I don't want to devalue mine.
No.
Dana just bought his, he sure doesn't want to have to move out.
No, and I, 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 anything within the law that we can do, I'm willing to do. I, we'll do 100%. I'll, I'll speak to Dave about this tomorrow with this specific thing. And if there is a way that we can do it, the next day he'll be over there digging. I, I just, we gotta watch out that we don't go on the property and get ourselves be liable for anything. But if he says, yeah, Ed, I checked it out, we can do it, and he clear, put, the day after, they will be over there digging it, I could kill us. I will make sure it's done. And, but in the meantime, we'll still look to help some, help with rerouting some of the water that we can. It's still not gonna take care of his issue. He's saying that those big humongous 100,000 gallon tanks that he's putting in there is gonna take care of the water. But that's, that's just-
Speak to the hospital about the big tanks they've put under their parking lot and found that the plumbing went backwards and they had a fountain or third.
Yeah, I know.
Remember that.
Yeah, I remember that, I do, yeah.
So they don't necessarily work this way.
No, 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 I, I'm, in theory they do, but in actuality, well, sometimes it's a whole different story.
And that might work perfectly fine, you know, for his building with the runoff from, you know, his roof and everything else.
But that doesn't take care of the other part.
Correct, correct.
It all depends where the tanks are and how they, he said, I'm just saying what he told me. He said he would, he, the tanks would go in, and the property would be so that the water would run into the tanks and not onto the street. So I said, in theory, that's good. In actuality, it's another story, so we'll see. But I, I will check this out tomorrow with Dave Merzick.
Well, my, my big concern is-
Immediate.
The major part of the hurricane season is just beginning.
Yes.
That was not a hurricane to be at the last. It was less than four inches of water.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen if we get like Connecticut, where they got eight or 10 inches?
I don't even wanna think, but I, I will, I, I realize you have a problem. And I, I just want you to know that we're trying everything possible we can by law to do it. You know, Dick, but you've been on the board, we're trying. I mean, I'm, I didn't think of that thing with, with Dave Merzick, ask him about that. You got a copy of that thing where the people went in?
Have it?
Yeah. Give it to me, I'll email to Dave tomorrow morning. And he will go and check it out.
And just for some added clarity, there's a difference between historic wetland mapping and actually wetland delineation. Because wetland delineation is, is actually a coordinate value that it's taken. They go out and flag those positions. So if a wetland has been disturbed in that historic, it doesn't appear the way that the mapping-
Okay.
The way it looks now versus what the mapping may show. So there's, there's a-
Could you identify yourself, I don't know you.
Eric Ball, Deputy Mayor, sir.
Mayor, my question, two questions basically. His new buildings and parking lots are gonna create a lot of impermeable surface. So I'm assuming that's what these large tanks are for. But that's also gonna severely impact groundwater penetration in our neighborhood and make it even worse. So I'm assuming that the construction permits he's got are taking account of all of that. And also, can you confirm that all of the correct environmental permits were given two years ago when I bought my house? And all of a sudden, that wetland was six feet higher? That the correct environmental permits were given and applied for and given?
And have the code guys double check?
Please do. Because that's, that's, you know, because we got talking about it, so there used to be a wetland there, now it's six feet higher and we've got ponds across it.
Those permits would be through the state and city.
Right, but I'm, but still-
Well, he's gotta do them.
Right.
That's not even through us, but he will have to do those.
Right, so I would just like to-
Just use them now, they were done previously. Is that what you're saying?
So for the state, the state, he has to be filled in more than an acre of land to get it. The state apparently called him, they didn't want to drive down here, so they asked him to get the measurements. And he gave the measurements as less than an acre, so as far as the state's concerned, he didn't need a permit.
Well, I think one of us, if we call the state, say, can you come and verify that? You know, before we have to get together at a class action lawsuit to have it done? You know, the property owner's over there, but, you know, I would like to see verification.
First, as far as his storm water runoff, that's gonna be all DEP, they're gonna all be involved with that.
Now, the, the DEC was down last week. What became of that?
You talked to the DEC, didn't you?
I didn't, nobody, I didn't meet with anybody.
The young man that I spoke to was from their streams department.
We, we called up and said there was an issue and to come down and to take a look at it.
Right.
We won't know anything until they actually make a report out.
Right, Dick and I talked to a young man named Trevor.
The last guy looked it over, he says, they sent the wrong department.
Yeah, he's from streams, not wetlands, not runoff. So, but he would talk to their analysts and have them look at the historic maps, the current maps, et cetera. Because maps change over time, we know that, but-
And the one person I spoke to from the state said that because it was a federal wetlands, they didn't have any jurisdictional-
Right, and the feds say, well, it's a state wetland.
Yeah, one, yeah, go this way.
Push and pull, you kind of think.
But we're not gonna stop until we get an answer on this, until something is physically done. I'm sorry that you have to go through all this. I realize what the flooding is, I mean, we had the flood in 2006. I had seven feet of water in my basement, so I know, I have an idea. Not an ongoing problem like you do, but I realize what flooding can do.
2006, I had that much water.
How much you got now? How much you got now?
No.
How much did I have now?
Yeah.
I don't have any right now, because I-
How much did you have from that?
I don't know, because I read three pumps, one for day one.
Dana had 12 inches.
I had 12 inches.
You've never had water there before?
Not in the two years I've been there, and the former owner said there was never water in this basement, and there was no evidence of it. So.
And Tony, remember that flooding ever? And Tony had two or three inches, that was all bitter news. That was before this last storm, I don't know what he had related to.
If you didn't hear me the first time, 51 years we've been there, not a drop of water in this, until I watched him fill that ditch in. That's what happened.
Can I ask you a question? What does he have to gain by doing this? What is, what is the, what is the reason for filling in the ditch all of a sudden? Does anybody have any idea?
Too many people talking, I'm wearing hair and ass.
Does anybody know why he filled in the ditch? Like, what does he gain?
Yes, he was leveling up his land, it was running downhill. They backfilled it with dirt, pushed it and leveled it up. They went too far. They went over to the ditch, which is, he could've stopped 10 feet from the ditch. There's no reason why he couldn't have. I haven't been in construction all my life, and I think it's stupid what he's saying.
And he let us, he actually let us, I met William back then, he let us come in there with the excavator, we spent a few days over there with laser levels. We did the ditch all the way around where he stopped all those, and everything all flowed and everything was good until now this. So he let us on before it cleared out, and now-
Is there a project that's about to be built on there or something?
Yeah, he wants to put a big building.
Yeah, he's gonna put another big building like they have, another one, second one. He's supposed to have, I think, a bus company come up, they're gonna build buses or something. And they gotta bring another hundred employees, and I feel that's great. However, you gotta make sure that the people that live in the area are okay too.
I'd, I'd like to mention another thing, for anybody that doesn't know me, I've built several, several houses over there. Not only did I give the street to the village, the street cost me $8,000. If you look in the records, I gave it to the village for $1. And I could have it dried out.
That Guild or Cherry that you gave, was it Cherry Street or Guild Street?
Part of Cherry and Guild.
The part of them together, okay, I got you.
You go over there, you'll see the Cherry Street in front of my house is bigger. My house was not there originally.
Your house down the short way was blocked off, that's where I opened.
That's where the street ended.
Oh, okay, I got you, okay. Again, like I said, I'm waiting, waiting to hear from the Army Corps of Engineers. I will speak to Dave Merzick tomorrow about this and see if there's a way. And trust me, if there's a way, I give you my word. If he says, Ed, you can go do it, the day after, Butch will be there with his crew digging the whole thing out. So everything legally that we can do, we will do, yes.
Have you reached out to our local politicians, our, our state representatives? Have you contacted their offices for help, at least to get through to the Army Corps?
I can do that, I haven't, I haven't done it as of yet.
Okay.
But I, I figured the Army Corps sometimes takes, well, the word I heard with the Army Corps is sometimes they don't call you back. But then I had, if I could call that direct number in Albany, which I did, he says usually within a couple of days you hear. So I figured I wanna give him two days. And then I'll call Malero or, or Oberaka.
Oberaka.
And, and, yeah.
And Teague, now, right?
Yeah, Teague, well, Teague's come here in December, January, I think.
It's still Angelino.
Yeah, Angelino.
Yeah.
But I will call, I saw them the other day, last week, and I was talking to them. I mentioned we had an issue down here, so. I didn't ask for any help yet, because I wasn't sure how we're gonna get answered. But if I don't get an answer by tomorrow, I will call probably Malero. I'll call them both.
The Governor's Regional Director can also assist.
Is opposed to problems for a health issue?
Right.
Would it be somebody to contact them because of the schoolchildren to protect them?
I guess it could be a health issue with mosquitoes, you say there's a lot of mosquitoes over there.
Have you ever looked how many diseases are carried by mosquitoes?
Yeah, I know, there's a lot.
There's a lot, and that's in the northeast.
Edward, a lawsuit from the neighborhood, do anything.
Well, I, I, probably would, but you know like the typical lawsuits are, it's gonna take forever, go to court and get dates and everything. I, I think our way right now, we're doing, if for some reason I run into a brick wall and nobody can help us at all, then that's your other alternative. But that's gonna take a long time and money. I would rather, give me another week or so to see what we can actually get done, and, and then I'll let you know. I'll, I'll call you up, I'll, I'll let you know what's going on. I, I really am upset with that. I tried to sit down and talk like a gentleman to figure things out. And I figured, my reason for doing that was figuring if we, if I could at least get the ditch open for now, then we can worry about the rest of it afterward. That was my main goal, getting the ditch open so the water falls. And he said, yes, I'll do it if you do this, if you, if you make a different flow of the water, which we can do. And I said, fine, but we're just gonna have to have it in writing. And that's why, that's how I got the lawyers involved in this. So maybe I'll know more tomorrow, I don't know. But I will keep you informed, I will call up on this definitely first thing tomorrow. I'll speak to Dave Merzick.
I also wanna, I wanna thank whoever suggested that, you or Butch, it helped my soil, my soil has been dry since your pump.
Since your pump?
Yeah, Butch did that, he went out with his crew and did it, yeah. I told them to get as much as you can out, I mean, there's only so much they can do, but they did a good job. We try to help, I mean- We're trying to help. I mean, uh.
It took, it took a couple more days for me to get mine.
Here from the way.
But by some point, I'm.
I know. I was driving down there every day. I saw how I was trying to not to drive through the water too much, 'cause I know when Mary had called me, he said, the trucks could, I'd make a wave into the house. So I, I, I went up and I, I turned, I turned around right.
You led you to the regatta on Cherry Street, if I remember correctly.
I, I, yes, you did. And I turned around just before I got to the water because I didn't wanna create a wave. Not that I didn't go there. I've been going there every day looking at it.
Well, that was thoughtful of you, 'cause many cars went through and, yeah, it, it was.
I know what you said. Yeah, that stuck in my brain. So I said, no, I'm not gonna go through. So you didn't see me pass it to you. It wasn't that I was there. I've been going there every day. And Butch has been filling me in. I said, keep doing it until we get it down as low as we can.
Butch has done a great job keeping us apprised of what was going on and.
Yeah, we're got, well, and, and until we get to some, God forbid, if it starts raining again and you have a problem, we know that what has to be done, he'll be down there right away. If we have to get another pump someplace else, we will.
Even on the weekend?
We gotta pay, we gotta pay what we gotta do. We'll, we'll do what we gotta do to get it going. Uh, and like I said again, not to repeat what I am repeating, I will call Dave Merzick first thing in the morning. I will speak to the, our representatives within a couple of days. And we'll get some kind of results, something that we're gonna do. And I'll keep you informed. That's all I can say for right now.
To subscriber advertise, call six zero seven four six four four zero zero nine.